Good evening, everyone, and welcome to the regular city council meeting here. I call this to order. We have no one for the open forum, so I will ask all of you, if you're able, to please stand and do the pledge with us.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. This time, I'd like to ask the council to approve the minutes of the special city council work session of September 27th, the regular city council meeting of September 27th, 2016.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor signify by aye.
Aye.
Aye opposed, motion carries. Tonight, we have several presentations. I'll let Councilmember Fitz Henry start.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. It's my privilege to present that we're going to be swearing in two officers tonight. And the swearing in will be our deputy chief, Mike Coop. So I'll bring him forward. And Mike, what badge numbers are we at now? Well, I didn't put you in the spot, I hope. Well, I was standing there, and I'm wondering if you lapped me twice yet.
Okay.
Can't hear you.
Yeah, you gotta get in the mic.
Get in the mic. Get in the mic.
So, yeah, it's ever-flowing. It's hard to keep track. I'm badge 25, and I've got to a point where I've kind of lost track of the numbers. But it gives me, Madam Mayor and members of council, it gives me great honor to come before you tonight, the swearing in. Originally planned, two officers, but one couldn't make it because he's got strep throat and he's sick. So move forward. And also on pitch hitting for Chief Jay Antorn tonight. He's in the building in another meeting, and hopefully he should be done popping in. I'll proceed forward with great honor to come swearing in one of our most recent officers. She just completed her year probation. Her department started in August of 2015, and we're very proud of her. Officer Latoya Wood, do you come up here? Sorry about that. But before I go to the oath office, Latoya brought a couple real close yesterday. I'd like to introduce them.
Yeah.
Her mother, Marquita. If you just, there you go. Thank you. Sister Latia and Latrice.
All right.
Thank you. And daughter, Aleah.
Oh, right.
Must be really proud of them. They're a wonderful family. Thanks for coming.
They're beautiful. Yeah.
So go with the oath office. Latoya, if you raise your right hand. I state your name. Follow me square. Support the Constitution and the laws of the United States. State of Minnesota and the Charter and Ordinance, Charter and Order of the City of Richfield. And to discharge faithfully the duties devolving upon me as a police officer for the City of Richfield to the best of my judgment and ability. Congratulations. And lastly, I just want to reemphasize, we're very proud of Latoya. She's done a great job and a great asset to the police department. Our other officer, Joel Carroll, is sick. We'll reschedule. Perhaps we'll bring him before you.
Yes. Please do.
You'd like to meet him.
Oh, that's wonderful.
No, it's really nice to have family members show up.
It really is. Thank you for coming.
That's very, very special.
Yeah, it is. It's nice to have you here.
You can go back and watch this again on TV because it is, they do have a, like a webcast of it. So make sure you go back and record it and preserve that for a while.
Yes, put it on your Facebook.
Yeah, put it on your Facebook page. Thank you.
Yeah, thanks.
Cute.
Very cute. Very wonderful. Next, we have the public health accreditation presentation by the Bloomington Public Health Director, Bonnie Paulson. Is Bonnie?
Thank you for being here. I'm kind of excited about how this all came about and finally we got here.
Good evening, Mayor Gotel and members of the council. I came here tonight to say, we are accredited.
Yeah.
Great.
Wonderful. It is a big, big deal. So basically, just a reminder what accreditation is. So it's a measurement of how a health department is with their performance management, their quality improvement, and how we serve the community. So with our accreditation, we are three out of eight in the state. There are only eight of us across the state of Minnesota who have been accredited, so that's a statement. And there's about 3,000 public health departments across the nation, and we are, there's only about 150. So we're part of that 150. So basically, what accreditation does is it just recognizes the achievement of the public health department and shows the quality that it has. The Fab, the Public Health Accreditation Board, was incorporated in 2007, and the standards just came out in 2009. So it's a fairly new process. But again, so there's not a whole lot of people that have gone through this accreditation. So after some agencies have been accredited, the Fab Board did do an evaluation of accredited health departments, and the list here of the benefits is there. I'm not going to read them all, but I just, the stimulation of quality and performance improvement, I really have seen that as we went through this process over this past two years. We have increased accountability to stakeholders and really making sure that we do community engagement. It made us more competitive for funding opportunities, and it increased our communication with governing So we had our site visit in June, and some of you participated in the site visit. And from that report, they gave us our three greatest strengths. And again, I'm not going to read them, but I want to give you the three takeaways. Put my glasses on here. So the three takeaways are the recognition of our complex structure, that we work collaboratively while maintaining autonomy. So really, that we work together as the three cities, but we really focus on what does Richfield need, what does Bloomington need, and what does Edina need? That we have great community engagement, and that we adopted the spirit and culture of a quality agency. As with anything, you can have opportunities for improvement, and this was also from the site visit report. We need to continue to work on documentation. We need to increase engagement of the community when we do our community health needs assessment. And while we use evidence-based and research-based practices, we need to do better about sharing that information out. So the overall impression from, again, from the site visitors was that Bloomington Public Health appears to have a passionate, well-trained staff with extensive depth of experience, that we have a unique jurisdiction. They asked a lot of questions about our Public Health Alliance, but that the public health service arrangements among the three cities work well, and that we hold a respected and expert position in the community and are sought for advice and insights and direct connections to community members, and that they felt that it was evident that our community partners that came to the site visit, that we listened and respond to the community needs. So those were all positive things. We had to report to 97 domains, and as you can see, we either largely or fully demonstrated all of the domains. And again, I think you probably heard this, when we uploaded our documents, we had to upload 615 documents. So we put a lot of, a lot of work into it. You can see the one white spot that says "not demonstrated," and that is where we didn't do a good enough job that they felt of sharing out our research-based data and the evidence-based data that we have. So we're working on that. As a reminder, I like to do this every time I'm in front of you, is that, you know, you are the local governance, you are the local board of health for the City of Richfield, that Bloomington, Edina, and Richfield are community health boards, and you're all organized under Minnesota Statute 145A, and that we've been working together since 1977, and I think that's a really unique way that the cities have been working together for that long. We had worked on our Public Health Alliance mission, vision, and values, and I put them here for you to see, and I think those still are very important for all of us to remember. So any questions for me?
No, I just want to say, I got the opportunity to participate in some of the interview process for the Advisory Board of Health, because I'm the liaison to the Advisory Board of Health, and we are the Board of Health. And it was really good, and I heard a lot of what you had been through already then, when you had to pull all those documents together and everything like this. But this was a great process, and I'm really excited. I think our Boards of Health do a great work in our community, and we wouldn't have been awarded a million dollars from the ship grant if we hadn't been doing, you know, really great work here. And I think this only makes it, gives us bigger opportunities to do even more as the three cities together. So thanks for bringing that in and presenting this to us.
And again, it's the staff, you know, it's, you see me, but it's really the staff that are, they're working with the communities and working with the residents of Richfield that really deserve the credit for that.
Yeah.
I did bring our annual report, and you do have a copy.
This is very nice.
So just kind of letting you know that you have it, and let me know if you have questions about that.
Yeah, this is very nice. This is very nicely done. Any other questions, council? Thank you so much for coming tonight. We really appreciate that. Next, we have a presentation by, it's actually the annual meeting of the Arts Commission.
I'm Alexander Dahl, the chairman of the Board of Arts. Basically, just to give a rundown on our activities for the past year, we've increased our presence with the farmers' market events that we've been doing there. For the first half of the year, we kind of had to sponsor the events that were going on there, and then for the last half, we took it back over and hosted our own. And those ended with good numbers coming in from the community and generated a lot of positive results. In addition to that, we participated in the Health and Wellness Expo back in April, as well as we helped judge a photography contest in the local community, and that was in like June. And then also, we participated in Penn Fest with the rest of the advisory boards. And at Penn Fest, we ran out of all of our materials that we brought, so the event was very well received. In addition to the projects that we're working on, both of them have kind of wrapped up, the first one being the poetry on Portland. Now that Portland's been reopened, I understand that the poetry will actually be sandblasted on the sidewalks in the coming weeks, two months, or so. And then also, the second project that we spearheaded last year in cooperation with Public Works to actually start wrapping our electrical boxes in the city. And our first one was on the corner of 65th and Lyndale, right between Wendy's and the liquor store. And that's pretty much where we're at. We're going to be just kind of planning our events for the next year over, the next couple of months.
That's nice to hear. The lovely things that you've been doing throughout the community really show that. You know, I still talk about the sculpture tours that you do, and I've seen people doing similar things and taking that from us, so.
We're also looking forward to adding another one to that once the Haderadia sculpture goes in.
Oh, wonderful. That's excellent. That's excellent to hear. That's excellent to hear. Other questions or anything? I just want to thank, because I really think you add a lot to the city.
It definitely seems that we have increased our visibility.
Yes, you have. And a lot more people on your committee are doing really great things, so thank you.
Thank you.
At this time, we'll go to hats off for hometown hits. Tom, I'll start with you.
Well, thank you, Madam Mayor. I want to mention that you were out this morning in our city, and we had the opening of Portland Avenue, and I'm not sure if we, I'm understanding we do have a picture of that that we can put up, so there we are.
There it is. There it is.
And I'll turn it over to you, Mayor, if you want to say a few words about what happened and what really Portland was, so.
Well, actually, it was kind of a freeway. And the design started in 2013 for this road, and then we know it was a couple of years ago that the construction started. We did it in two phases this year and last year. But what we did is we narrowed that road down to three lanes. We put boulevards on there, we put real sidewalks in there, so people can go down there with their kids, and your little kids can ride trikes and things. It's safe for them. There's a bike path on the, on the street, but also a bike path up off the street, so you have alternatives. We have places for snow load. We have pedestrian lighting there, and we're going to have the art, the poetry on the sidewalk. So I think we really had a full gamut of things, and we've made this road slower. It was amazing. We were sitting on the corner, and we were all commenting together as we were doing the opening, that we could tell the traffic was slower. We could tell that. So it's really going to matter when the trees really grow up and those kinds of things start to happen in there. And I know it was a lot for a lot of people to live through, and we've got a lot of calls, and there was a lot of patients, and there were people cutting through neighbors and through neighborhoods and whipping through. But we really, really appreciate you living through this, and once you get used to it, you're going to, I really love it. I really like driving down it now. It's very nice, and it's a much calmer street, so I really applaud the work that the city has done on this road, so.
And that's all I have. Thank you.
Oh, okay. Council member.
And I'll just kind of follow up. I just, I drive Portland on my way home from work and now can use it, and I really do think it is the kind of infrastructure investment that the city's making that looks to the future, and creates a road that's safer and more usable for folks of all kinds. And, you know, it's, I haven't been on the council as long as other folks up here, but it was the one project where I was like, gosh, this project's been going on my entire time on the council. And so it's one that we've completed. And I also want to thank the folks that have lived near Portland Avenue for experiencing the last two years. It's, you always want to just snap your fingers and make a project like that happen immediately. It doesn't. But now that it's finished, I'm hopeful that residents that live near there and throughout the city can enjoy the new road.
Okay. Councilmember Garcia.
Well, two things. I wanted to mention that we still have early voting going on, and we'll have that till, what, the 7th, and then we vote on the 8th. So, well, I think that's the way it goes, isn't it?
Yeah.
Yeah, I believe so. So anyway, and the voting turnout has been very, very good, very high, which is surprising, not only in Richfield, but in other communities around the cities. So, you know, take advantage of it. If you don't want to stand in line, you know, election day, this is, this is the thing to do. Come and vote early. Not often, but early. I try to vote often, but, you know, I said, can I vote now and then on the 8th? And they said, no. But then I was just kidding. Okay, the other thing is Portland Avenue, I've waited to door knock Portland Avenue because I wanted to see, you know, get the reaction of the folks that live there. And it's been, it's been very, very good, you know? Folks are just saying, you know, it's such a pleasure now. The only thing they're waiting for now is the planting of the flowers, and then I think that they're going to be extremely happy, because it is a big plus. It really has added to the value, I think, of people's homes, because it sets them back and, and it, you know, and the sidewalk, it's all, it's all, it's all really, like Mike said, an investment, but it's something that we appreciate, and the most important thing is that the public appreciates it.
Councilmember.
You know, I just want to add what Edwina and Mike said, and I think that the patience is the virtue that we can't over-amplify in regards to the citizens. We've had some pretty tough projects over the last three or four years, and it's improved the city, it's improved the infrastructure, and there are occasional problems that get addressed quickly by the city and by staff. And once again, I would just applaud the patience of the people, knowing that it takes time to make the city better, to improve it, and you, you know, bared, you gritted your teeth, you bore it, and now you look at Portland, and you know what it's, what it's all about. And I, all I can add is, I don't drive Portland that often, but even just with the striping and three lanes on Penn, which is going to duplicate what happened on Portland, although it's three or four years still down the road, it does have a calming effect. It makes for a more pleasant drive north to south through Richfield on any of those streets that have been worked on, and I think it's just going to continue to get better.
And, you know, for those people who are in Portland and went through that, your agony is gone, but those on 66th Street, some of us, Pat and I, it's going to start. So, you know, it's everywhere. And what I like to talk to people about is our roads are over 50 years old, and some people were here when they were first put in. And guess what? It's time to do them again, and it's going to be painful to live through. And a lot of us are going to share the pain, and that's part of living a long, good life. We'll all have to go through the reconstruction of a lot of our community, so, thank you.
And Mayor, you know, it's, it's nice to take credit for something, you know, that we all, we all take credit for a lot of things. But really, I think Kristin Asher has done a marvelous job, her and her staff, and what I appreciate is, because like I said, I did, I did speak to a number of people, is that, you know, when they had a problem, someone, you know, from your department came by and talked to, talked to the people, that, what do you need? What do you think? And really got answers to those folks. And believe me, you know, I mean, this lady is 80, and she said, she said, boy, she said, that girl that came over and, you know, I'm, you know, you know, when you're 82, you know, you have, a 50-year-old could be a girl. Came over, and she was so nice, and she, she listened, she told me what needed to be done, and I made some suggestions, and, you know, she said, and I'm happy because it was all taken care of. So kudos to you, Kristin, and your folks at Public Works.
Good job. At this time, I'd ask the council to approve the agenda.
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor signify by aye.
Aye.
Aye opposed? The agenda is accepted. We have a long consent calendar, City Manager.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, members of the city council. Yes, we do have one of the longest consent calendars of the year, but the bright side of it is, if they weren't on consent, it'd all be individual items, and the meeting would be three times as long. The consent calendar, for those in the audience, contains several separate items which are acted upon by the city council in one motion, and once the consent calendar has been approved, then all the individual items and their recommended actions would also have been approved, and no further action on those items is necessary. Tonight, we start with item A, which is: Consideration of the Approval of a Resolution Granting a One-Year Extension of a Conditional Use Permit and Variances Allowing an Auto-Repair Business at 6600 Portland Avenue. Item B is: Consideration of the Approval of a Second Reading of the Ordinance Amendment Zoning Land Adjacent to 6600 Cedar Avenue as General Business C2. Item C: Consideration of the Approval of a Resolution Restricting Parking on Nicollet Avenue from 76th Street to I-494. Item D: Consideration of the Approval of a Resolution Authorizing the Lawful Gambling Premises Permit for the American Legion Auxiliary Unit of the Minneapolis-Richfield Post 435 to Conduct Lawful Gambling at the Minneapolis-Richfield American Legion Post 435, which is at 6501 Portland Avenue. Item E is: Consideration of the Approval of a Resolution Reauthorizing Membership in the 4M Fund and Entering Into a Declaration of Trust with the 4M Fund. Item F is: Consideration of the Approval of an Annual Request for a Temporary On-Sale Intoxicating Liquor License for the Church of St. Richard, Located at 7540 Penn Avenue South for their Fall Festival, which will take place on November 13th, 12th and 13th, 2016. Item G is: Consideration of the Approval of an Annual Request for a Temporary On-Sale Intoxicating Liquor License for St. Nicholas Episcopal Church, Located at 7227 Penn Avenue South for their Jukebox Saturday Night Event, which takes place on November 5th, 2016. Item H is: Consideration of the Approval of a Request for a New Therapeutic Massage Enterprise License for First Step LLC, which is located at Suite 400, 7600 Lyndale Avenue South. Item I is: Consideration of the Approval of a Resolution Authorizing the Acceptance of Office of Traffic Safety Funds for a Four-Year Grant to Fully Fund an Officer and Fully-Equipped Squad Car Dedicated to DUI or DWI Enforcement in Richfield. Item J is: Consideration of the Approval of the Second Reading of an Ordinance Repealing and Replacing City Code Section 550 Pretending to Flood Plane Management Regulations and Resolution Authorizing Summary Publication. Item K is: Consideration of the Approval of the First Reading of an Ordinance Amending Subsection 400.21 of the Richfield Code of Ordinances Relating to the Adoption of the Minnesota State Fire Code, and Scheduling a Second Reading for October 25th, 2016. Item L: Consideration of the Approval of Two Resolutions Appointing Election Judges for the November 8th, 2016 General Election. Item M: Consideration of the Approval of the Continuation of the Agreement with the City of Bloomington for the Provision of Food Inspection Services for Richfield for the Year 2017. Item N: Consideration of the Approval of the 2016-17 Contract with the City of Bloomington Using Public Health Emergency Preparedness Grant Funds Distributed by a Federal Grant from the Centers for Disease Control to Provide Services in the Area of Public Health, Emergency Preparedness, Bioterrorism, and the Development of Response Systems. Item O: Consideration of the Approval of an Agreement with the Minnesota Department of Transportation to Maintain the Gateway Monuments and Landscaping Installed as Part of the Cross-Town Reconstruction Project. And finally, item P: Consideration of the Approval of Ordering a Feasibility Report for the 2017 Alley Paving Project. And that concludes tonight's consent calendar.
City Manager, you almost ran out of alphabet there.
Yes, I just about did.
Yeah, just about. I'll move the consent calendar.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor signify by aye.
Aye.
Aye opposed? Consent calendar is approved. And item eight. Item eight is a public hearing regarding the resolution adopting the special assessment role for weed elimination from private property and removal or elimination of public health or safety hazards from private property. Minnesota State statute provided that the city may levy a special one-year assessment for the elimination of public health or safety hazards or the elimination of weeds from private properties. The special assessments are based on costs incurred by the city in connection with the abatement of weeds or public health or safety hazards on certain properties in the city which are not properly maintained. The owners of the subjected properties are notified by the city to take corrective action with regards to the issue from the, from the property. If the specific property issues were not abated within the proper time limit, the city would take the corrective action necessary and bill the property owner. In all cases, property owners will be notified that any unpaid charges or fees may be assessed against the property. So at this time, we're going to conduct the public hearing. So would anyone like to come forward to talk about this? Anybody? This is regarding abatement of weeds or public health hazards. Anyone at all? Anyone come forward? Anyone? I'll make a motion to close the public hearing.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor signify by aye.
Aye.
Aye. Public hearing is closed. At this time, I'd ask the approval of the resolution adopting the assessment for weed elimination for private property and removal or elimination of public health or safety hazards from the private property.
Second.
Any discussion?
Well, I just wanted to say that I, you know, I urge residents that if they have someone in their neighborhood, some house in the neighborhood that needs attention, don't hesitate to call, because we all, you know, it's, it's important to get that taken care of so that we can, we can appreciate the community. And Mr. Davis has got.
Please.
Madam Mayor, members of the council, I just want to say one thing. I think it's a tribute to Richfield and the citizens that we're looking at a $4,000 assessment role here, when in the past, it's often been between $10,000, $12,000, maybe $13,000. And what that means is, obviously, it's about a third of what we had in the past. That means a lot more people are taking a lot better care of their yards, and we're not having to go out there and do that kind of work. And so I think when you drive through the city, you can see that, that things look a lot better. It seemed to me, as I drove through town, you know, during the course of the summer, that it seemed like that. Of course, there's always going to be some places that, you know, that you're going to have to deal with, and that's, it's great if citizens call and let us know that, but I think it's really encouraging to find that we have such a small number compared to what we've had for many, many years.
It is. It's, it's kudos to the cities and the inspection programs that you're doing, and some of the education programs, too. So, any other discussion? All those in favor signify by aye.
Aye.
Aye opposed? Motion carries. We have item number nine, and this is Councilmember Howard.
I have a public hearing regarding the resolution adopting the special assessment role for unpaid false alarm user fees against private property. The Richfield City Code and City Charter allow the city to specially assess delinquent false alarm user and City Charter allow the city to specially assess delinquent false alarm user fees against the respective properties. State statutes provide that the city may levy a special one-year assessment for these costs. Unpaid alarm user fees must be paid to the city within thirty days from the date of written notice by the city to the alarm user. Fees not paid within the time specified will be subject to a ten percent penalty charge. The special assessment for unpaid false alarm user fees assessed to private properties provides a means for the city to recover costs incurred with the response by public safety to an alarm call on certain properties in the city that turns out to be false. So, this is a public hearing?
Public hearing is open. Does anyone like to come forward to speak on this item? This specific item? Public hearing is open.
Move to close the public hearing.
Second.
Second.
All those in favor are closing the public hearing, signify by aye.
Aye.
Aye. The public hearing is closed.
Then my motion is to approve the resolution adopting the assessment for unpaid false alarm user fees against private property.
Second.
Any other discussion?
I'd like to just make a comment. My comment is, is that if you look at this, you think that every false alarm gets fined. It's not true. When officers arrive, if there's a factor, let's say lightning, you know, electricity and that, they're not considered a false alarm. So, these false alarms are true false alarms. And the real purpose, when we did this way back, when I was in the police department, is police have to respond to all them alarms, and it can be a dangerous situation depending on the alarm. So, it's to encourage those people that have bad alarms to fix them. So, that was the purpose of this.
If I may.
Yes. Oh, do you want to say something?
No, in keeping with what Tom said, is that I want to point out to the City Manager and Jay that 2409 West Sixty-Sixth Street hadn't been on this list for four years. So, we paid attention, we got it taken care of.
We noticed that.
And you no longer get to train the canine dogs in our building.
Wow, wow, wow. Okay, all those in favor signify by aye.
Aye.
Aye opposed? The motion carries. Thank you. Pat, I believe you have the next council member. Elliot, you have the next.
Thank you, Mayor. This is the consideration of the Transportation Commission's recommendation for a Sixty-Ninth Street pedestrian pilot project between Xerxes Avenue and Penn Avenue South. As a result of frequent complaints by residents regarding the speed of traffic on Sixty-Ninth Street between Xerxes Avenue and Penn Avenue, city staff collected speed and traffic data on the roadway. Initial data collection supported public concern and identified a serious vehicle speeding problem along this segment of the roadway. Sixty-Ninth Street is also classified as a collector roadway, which by city policy should have a sidewalk along at least one side of the street. The Sixty-Ninth Street pedestrian pilot project was recommended by the Transportation Commission on September seventh, two thousand sixteen, to address vehicle speeds on Sixty-Ninth Street and a lack of pedestrian facilities along the collector class roadway. The pilot project will designate the current lane configuration on the street and convert the parking area along the north side of the street to an on-street pedestrian and bicycle path from Xerxes Avenue to Penn Avenue. Staff will periodically evaluate vehicle speeds and the number of pedestrians and bicyclists using Sixty-Ninth Street. The pilot project would extend through June of two thousand seventeen with a summary report presented to the Transportation Commission and City Council for long-term considerations at that time. At this time, I would move to approve the Sixty-Ninth Street pedestrian pilot project to convert the on-street parking along the north side of Sixty-Ninth Street to an on-street pedestrian and bicycle path from Xerxes Avenue to Penn Avenue to be reevaluated in two thousand seventeen. Mayor, is my understanding that, I think, I think city staff said that there were some citizens that had indicated they wanted to speak, and they're going to speak now rather than at the opening. Is that correct?
Okay, so, this is, speaking on an item of this such, you have approximately three minutes each. Okay, please state your name and your address.
Hey. My name is Kevin Watts. I recently moved into Richfield, June second. I live on the southwest corner of Sixty-Ninth and Russell. Thank you for allowing me to speak to you. I'm an avid cyclist. I took last night's great weather opportunity to put forty miles in. My turnaround point was the High Bridge in St. Paul coming back. The vast majority of what I did was on roadways that had bike compliant signs on them in lanes. I applaud what this metro has done with the bike lanes in the city, and in the whole metro area. It's the Abuski's groups, it's the traffic commissioners, it's the councils, and everyone that does this to make this awesome. I recently introduced my girlfriend Jill to cycling. She's been able to see the awesome sights of the city that only a cyclist can see. So, you can see that we are, I'm a very pro bike lanes. I love these things. I love what's happening on here. I came down Portland last night at eight fifteen from Crosstown all the way down to Seventy-Sixth at speed. It was awesome. It was cool. Jill and I spent a lot of time sitting outside over the summer along Sixty-Ninth Street. We were just thrilled by the pedestrian and bike traffic that was going down that street. But I do want to say that I do not support this plan. And I do not support this plan because it's, there's various things in this plan that I find dangerous. The promotional material themselves point out a very, very big flaw that I see in this plan. And that is, biked off lane, a curb on one side, a hard curb on one side, a bump with pylons on the other side, a big drop from Vincent down to Thompson, and the fact that somebody could go out there with a dog on a long leash and take the whole thing up. This kid's coming down that hill, going down the hill, heading east, and has to bail, for whatever reason, somebody turning up that street with two dogs. I saw that yesterday, somebody coming up Thompson with two dogs. It's going to take up that whole lane. Where's that kid going to bail? What's the save? How do you get off of that? Where there's shared use trails in the parks, there's grass on either side where you can go. So, as a result of that, an avid cyclist such as myself, a heavy-duty cyclist, and my ilk, which there are thousands of in the city, would not use that. So, then comes the unintended consequences of what happened when this plan is put into place. The lane, which was assumed to have been the center line, which I understand is not the real lane, but it was assumed to be the center line. Now, with the striping and this plan, it pushes eastbound traffic hugging the southbound curb. I can stand on the end of my driveway, and we've done many experiments with this on Fridays and Saturday nights, just standing at the end of the driveway, noting how close traffic comes to us. Standing on that with no oncoming traffic from the west, eastbound cars are loath to break that center line. It makes a very difficult situation there when you're trying to cruise down there. So, my recommendation here is that you do not do this plan, that you do it the correct way. When you do it, get the funding and make it a proper path. Don't use this experiment to reduce speeds as a way to endanger the lives of people who use this street on a regular basis. I'm really concerned, too, with one Sixty-Sixth Street comes on, that's going to put crap...
Okay, all right. Thank you. Thank you for coming.
Do you want to...
Oh, yeah. The other issue is, on the south side, is if you mow the lawn and you're on a corner lot, you have to go along that edge, and you have to be in the street. And I often do the lawn, and I am afraid to. Because one time, I had to stop, and three cars went by me and did not curve around. So, even a simple task of mowing the lawn cannot be done safely if you're on the south side of the road. And we've also observed that, I'm sure statistically, and your machines show a reducing speed, someone standing on the side of the road, it does not appear that there's a reducing speed. We see cars that are totally cruising east down there. We've seen cars that have gone west in the parking lane. It's very confusing, and it's not safe as a resident walker or biker.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you for coming.
Love you.
Yeah. Great. Was there somebody else who wanted to come speak for three minutes? Anyone? Please. Come up and state your name and address.
Hi, I'm Kay Nelson. I live on Sixty-Ninth and Sheridan. I'm not a biker. I pass these guys coming here tonight. They really move. But anyway, I have lived on Sixty-Ninth Street since nineteen eighty-nine. And traffic has increased dramatically as far as speed and the amount of people that are driving. And nobody seems to want to follow rules. I'm not even sure how to say this. But anyway, it seems that since the movie theater and the restaurants at Southdale have come in, that traffic has really increased. And I'm afraid for people's safety. There was a car that slid into about six inches from my one neighbor's house in the spring. And then last winter, somebody crashed into a fence, and it still isn't repaired because of various insurance and whatever. Thank you.
Thanks. Thanks for coming here. Anyone else, please come up and state your name and your address?
I'm David Geppner. I live on Penn. I'm kind of a Johnny come lightly. I'm here for the ban shell, which I know you're all thinking positively about. I live at the corner of Sixty-Ninth and Penn. And Penn, Sixty-Ninth is a conduit over to Southdale. A lot of people use it, a lot of people walk it. And I am in favor of the experiment that has been recommended by the Transportation Commission, whereby it's hoped that the walkers and the slower bikers have a dedicated space so that they can get over to Southdale. And, you know, I bike, it's, the current configuration is such that the street is oriented toward the south, so that when I go to the west, I use it. When I come back the other way, I'm in the lane with traffic. I have not had any problems with, you know, cars zooming by me or pushing me over because the lane is smaller, if that's the argument that the other bicyclist was making. I think, you know, more people are looking to bike, they're looking to walk. I think there's a conscious effort on the part of you as leaders of our community to make facilities more convenient and safer for us to do so. So, I would like to see you look favorably at trying this and see how it goes. Thank you.
Okay, thanks for your time. Anyone else want to come and give testimony? Okay, testimony is concluded.
If I may, I think, I know that Mr. Watts and I had exchanged emails a while back, and I'd passed along some of his concerns to the staff, and I think also to Jack. And Jack, I know you're here tonight. Do you have some, either words of encouragement or words of consolation on what we expect to attain by having this pilot project and what the end result, what you're hoping it to be? And once again, I think anecdotally, nobody's really comfortable with anecdotes, but there has to be at least some proof that the traffic calming and everything, based on the striping, and then eventually marking that ten-foot-wide stripe for what its purpose is, and putting some markers up, is going to have at least a partially desired effect, if not totally. Is that correct? And I'm just trying to figure out what consolation we can offer Mr. Watts, that actually, it is going to turn into a benefit for the neighborhood and for the pedestrians and bicyclists on Sixty-Ninth Street.
Yes. Again, I'm Jack Bros. I am transportation engineer in the Public Works Department. I'm also the liaison between the Transportation Commission and staff. And what I can do real briefly is walk through a few slides, kind of the basis, some of the data that we collected on the street, and how we believe, as we move forward, what might be the benefits. And hopefully produce the data, as we talked about, this would end up in a presentation back here to council in the summer of next year. Just for correlation, what we did is, we took a look at the Sixty-Ninth Street data and compared it to the research report produced by AAA. This focuses on the impact speed and a pedestrian's risk of severe injury or death. And personally, we're going to look at the severe injury data, not the death data. Trying to be a little bit more positive. But this chart shows two curves. One is, the solid line is, if you get hit by a car at various speeds, what's the risk of severe injury? And the dashed line is a light truck, a pickup. And if you trace, I put some lines on here, twenty miles an hour, you have a fairly low risk of severe injury. You see, our speed limit is thirty in the state of Minnesota on residential streets. And you can see that by itself is a very fifty-fifty type of risk that we put our people at as they cross or walk along a street. At forty, you can start to see that it becomes extremely high. And we look at Sixty-Ninth Street, when we started to hear the complaints and collect the data, there's about three thousand cars a day. So, we looked at the eighty-fifth percentile speed that we collected. It was anywhere between thirty-five and thirty-eight miles an hour. And as you can see by this picture, it's going to be very challenging to put a sidewalk on the street without a lot of impacts to the parcels. I overlaid that data with the chart, and you can see that we are at a very high rate and high risk of injury to anyone on that street if they happen to be hit by a moving car or a pickup truck. And part of our data collection, we do use video work. As you can see, this is kind of grainy, but as you can see by this picture, there's a family walking, or two adults, and there is a young kid on a bike, and is pushing a stroller. And they're being passed by a pickup, and I don't know the speed of that pickup. But then that pickup can't slide as far over as they might like because there's cars driving. And this is a very confusing picture. They're driving in the parking lane before it was striped. And so, thankfully, nobody got hurt, of course, in this picture. But that's the family, I guess you would say, that we are concerned about, as we look at the fundamental infrastructure that we're providing or not providing on Sixty-Ninth Street. This is a picture that someone took up in Minneapolis, where they are facing similar challenges. And here, they took a space of the road, and they made it a pedestrian and bicycling facility separated by paint and some curbing with vertical delineators. And after Transportation Commission, we heard some of the same comments. And like in this picture, they're not going to be continuous. It'd probably be less than this, actually, just periodic curbs, you know, say, ten feet, and then large gaps. So, we're not trying to pin people in this space. It's a fairly open space, but it is a dedicated space for walking and bicycling. And so, this is that family, as it came a little closer to the camera. And so, our proposal would be to, we've got to stripe out there for the parking lane and to put some form of vertical delineation to provide them some This is a picture of the street with a little bit of a Photoshop effort to show periodic vertical delineators and a two-way trail system and the no-parking restriction that would go with it. Quick summary of our public process, the open house that we held back in August. We've had Facebook posts, a lot of direct communications, open house participants, posts of email communications. We actually put that last image on a poster on the street along with flyers, letting know today's decision. And I would just, again, my notes on some of the comments, we did see a reduction in speed when we striped the road, up to about four miles an hour for eastbound. We saw a lot of cars driving over the white stripe, and as commented, even some driving in the parking lane. So, westbound, we didn't see any reduction in speed. We believe with the vertical delineation that we will see reduction in speed in the other direction. But just to be clear on some of the concerns, you heard some of these about the bicycling. There's been comments about access from the alleys, since that lane is much closer to the south alley. It all meets our criteria, but it is, as traffic is closer to the curb line, it's a little tighter in those sightlines. But it meets our standard as a city. Concerns about snow maintenance and how, where will the snow go and that, this has all been coordinated with the maintenance department. And so, when we place any delineators, it's guided by those that will operate the snowplows. We will learn, and that's part of what we will report back. And of course, restricting parking is always going to be a concern. So, I would just make sure that's clear, that that's a concern. And in the summary slide here, if we move forward with this pilot project... And in the summary slide here, if we move forward with this pilot project, there would be parking restrictions, signs put up, additional pavement markings on the, on the pavement and those vertical delineators. We will continue to monitor and compare. So we have data before we striped it, we have data after we striped it. We would then collect data after we put in the no parking and the pedestrian way and recollect data in the spring and see if these various things have made a difference and which ones have and which ones haven't. We'll come back in July with a report if approved.
Please.
Can, can you give us some consolation for the trepidation anybody living on the south side has to mowing their lawn?
Yeah.
You know, when I first came to the city, one of the projects I had was evaluating Portland Avenue to see if it should remain a four lane or should we go to three lane? Yeah, I heard a lot of those stories on how the, the traffic is right at the end of your driveways, you're shoveling. So, so the, the reality is it is a challenge on a lot of our streets when traffic is right up against the curb. The, the best we can offer right now is we believe both westbound and eastbound will see a further reduction because it will feel much smaller than it did before we even put stripes out. And so hopefully, speed of traffic and we go back to those charts and, and nobody wants to get hit and when you're doing maintenance, you're not thinking, but hopefully there's an awareness and, and that it, the secondary goal, not only for pedestrian way, but is to reduce speeds.
If I may, and this is more to, to the chief or to Steve, do we have the ability on a, on a traveled road like this where you've got the lane pushed up that close to try to, to protect pedestrians and bicyclists on the other side? Can we, do we have any ability to set a sub-speed limit of 25 or something in, on a stretch of road just to ensure the safety of the people that live in that neighborhood?
Well, Mayor, Councilmember Elliott.
I'm just curious, I don't know.
Yes, we do. If it's a bike, if there's a bicycle facility on the road, I believe we have the ability to go down to 25 miles per hour as a, as a city. And I think that's just by resolution, I would imagine.
Madam Mayor, Councilmember, that's actually a state law.
Well, you know, and when we think about this, this is a pilot, so this may be some of the things we want to bring up when we, we come through this pilot because I'm hoping you come back after the pilot and, and give us a feedback again because that's really going to be impactful to us. And maybe some of your other neighbors will also come back and give us some, some feedback too, if we decide to move forward with this. And then we can also look, that also goes, Jack, since we've tasked him with this, to find out if there are other similar roads that they've been able to find other solutions for in those instances.
And to clarify, Madam Mayor and Council, that there is a state law, Minnesota state law, that on-street bicycle facilities, local jurisdiction can reduce speeds to 25.
Thank you. I'll just make a, a comment. And I think that, I mean, as I, door knocked in that area, almost every house brings up speed on 69th Street. I mean, it's a clear problem. And there's, this is, road is designated from our sidewalk policy, so it's also a clear problem for people that are on the road, for pedestrians. So I credit the Transportation Commission and the work of staff to come up with this idea to solve those problems. And, you know, will it work? Will there be unintended consequences? I think that's why it's a pilot project and that's why it's great that we're going to be collecting data, hard data, but also data from folks that are experiencing this. And so I would really, I'm going to be supportive of this, but I would also, also I'm going to keep my mind open as this unfolds to learn what's going on and hear from residents as we move forward with it. But, you know, fundamentally, we have a problem on 69th Street and I think this is a solution worth trying.
Councilmember?
I'd just like to ask Jack a question. Does that lane for bike pedestrian have to be a certain size? I mean, do we have wiggle room to give them a little more edging, you know, away from the traffic being right next to the curb or, if you get what I'm saying?
Yeah. Mayor, Councilmembers, we have worked specifically with, there, there are ranges of parking bays, but this was set specifically with the maintenance crew and the equipment to remove snow. And so it's intended that this is not put up in the spring and taken down in the fall that we're going to, we've modified our plowing program accordingly if, if approved. And so the equipment that they're going to use to remove the snow required the space that we're using.
Okay, we have sidewalk plows that couldn't get there, you know, we have the ones that do the sidewalks. I'm just curious, I want to rule out the possibility that we couldn't shrink that, you know, because we can't do it, but if there's a possibility, maybe need to look at that during the study to give these people a little, like I said, a little more wiggle room on that curb, so.
And it, it also includes sweeping the streets because, so, so it's something that we would be putting into the equation as to how did it maintain? They don't know how problematic this will be for maintenance, but as part of what we will report back on.
Okay.
Thanks.
All right, thanks. Councilmember?
It's been moved and seconded.
Okay, any other?
No.
All those in favor signify by aye.
Aye.
Aye. Oppose, we'll try the pilot. Look forward to seeing what comes out of that. Okay. Councilmember Fitz Henry.
Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Excuse me?
I don't, I don't think we caught who seconded that motion, just where it was made.
It was made?
We, was there a?
I think it was either Edwina or the mayor. It was a line.
I don't remember.
Okay. I can second it.
We can do it again.
Okay. Just as long as we have the, I just want to make sure we have the record, that's all. So you're seconding?
I'll second it.
There we go. Councilmember? Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, now my turn. Okay, the item on the, for consideration is the award of a contract for the municipal liquor store parking lot and the pertinent improvements at 6600 Cedar Avenue South. At its meeting on June 14th, 2016, City Council approved an upgrade to the municipal liquor store located at 6600 Cedar. The upgrade is scheduled to be substantially completed by November 4th, 2016. The complement, a total project, the parking area's need of improvement and expansion to accommodate customers' needs and provide better use of the space and traffic movement. At its meeting on July 12th, 2016, the City Council approved a resolution authorizing and directing condemnation of certain real estate easements, real estate easements and other rights of interest for the purpose of the expansion of the parking area serving the Cedar Avenue Municipal Liquor Store. The City Council authorized staff at, and the city attorney to initiate an eminent domain proceeding to acquire said interest. On September 22nd, 2016, Hennepin County District Court filed findings of fact, conclusion of law and order approving petition and transfer of title and possession of the condemned property on or after October 14th, 2016. The parking lot plan includes the parcel that will be transferred to the city. The new parking lot will have six additional parking spots for a total 36 parking spots. A new pylon digital sign will be located further east of the current sign, more visible to Trunk Highway, Highway 77. Current spaces along the north side of the building will be eliminated to provide a more direct entrance with minimal traffic congestion and improved safety. New landscape features are included in the plan in compliance with planning guidelines. As of this writing, the staff report bids for the project had not yet been received and opened. The bid opening was scheduled for October 10th, 2016. Staff will provide an update information to the council before its meeting October 11th regarding the bids submitted and staff's recommendation for award of the contract with updated information. The staff will also revise the recommend, recommended action for city or for the council's consideration at October 11th meeting. I don't know if we want to talk about this, but the, I'll go ahead and recommend the action that we could talk about, that we approve the award of the contract for the municipal liquor store parking lot and the pertinent improvements at 6600 Cedar Avenue South.
Second.
We're going to have to amend that.
Yes, Madam Mayor, members of the City Council. And so what happened is we went out for bids and that project was to come in at around $350,000 at the most. And we ended up with one bidder and the project came in at $455,000. At $455,000, there is no way we should do that project right now. And I'm pretty confident that if we take that back out to bid sometime next year with better timing, that we'll get $100,000 off of that bid like, like nothing. And I'm not crazy about having to open this beautiful new store with the parking lot the way it is, but I don't think we have any other choice. It, it doesn't make good public policy sense to spend $455,000 for a project that really shouldn't cost any more than 350,000. And we will eventually get the parking lot that we want. The downside is that we're going to have to, you know, we're going to have to shut that store down for another four to five weeks to do the parking lot, but that'll give us some time and the architects and our own people here to think about how we might be able to stage that to minimize the time that we have the store shut down. But, but right now, the motion that I would ask the City Council to consider would be to reject the bid at this time.
Okay. I understand that, I guess I would be in favor of it.
We can just vote no on the.
We can vote no.
Vote no on the motion.
Yeah, when we vote, when I say I'll favor, say aye, don't say anything and say nay.
Well, yeah, we got the thing so we can go ahead and deny the.
Yeah.
Okay, so do you want it to stand or would you prefer I amend the motion?
Just let it stand.
No, yeah, let it stand.
You don't need to amend it. Mayor and Councilmember Fitz Henry, I would just suggest that you rescind your motion and then have somebody make a new motion. Okay.
Okay, so what I'll do is then I'll, I'll go ahead and rescind my motion and ask that somebody else make a new motion.
I'll make a motion that we reject the, the current bid and come back at another time.
I'll second.
Another conversation on that? All those in favor? Signify by aye.
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 Oppose? Bid's rejected. This is item number 12. This is a presentation of results of a sound test conducted at Veterans Park on September 19th, 2016 in consideration of a community band shell. So I'm sure staff will have some report on this. I'll give you a quick synopsis of this. On July 12th, 2016, City Council approved a resolution granting approval of a site plan to allow the construction of a community band shell in Veterans Memorial Park. One of the conditions of the approval included sound test of the site conducted by a professional testing company. Councilmembers Fitz Henry and Howard and staff reviewed a number of sound testing proposals that would determine the potential impacts of the nearby residential and group selected. They selected ESI engineering from the proposals. A city of Shoreview contacted ESI engineering to perform the same type of sound and the test in their consideration of construction of a band shell in a, in Snail Lake Park. The scope of the ESI included the following measuring background noise near the proposed veteran park band shell site during early evening hours when most of the events will occur. Measurements will be made with five to 10-minute periods in 10 to 20 locations, which will be in the park and the, on the property lines. They measured performance sounds at a similar band shell site in Twin Cities area to help determine the expected impact of the city of the band shell surrounding areas. They simulated a performance at the proposed site at actual performance sound levels and measured the sound levels in the surrounding area. The simulation sounds levels will be calibrated to levels measured at the similar band shell. Measurements were made and same locations were selected for ambient measures and then compared with MPCA requirements and local noise ordinance. So there were several study conclusions and I'm going to let staff take it over from here with their presentation.
Thank you, Mayor and Councilmembers. So I'm going to introduce the folks from ESI Engineering, Ryan Skowg and Tony Baxter. They're going to present the, the results of the study and just what they did in general to, to get those results. Ryan?
Yes, thank you, Jim. Let me see if I can find a presentation here. Madam Mayor and Council, thank you for having me this evening. Again, my name is Ryan Skowg with ESI Engineering. I'm a noise control consulting engineer. Tony Baxter, principal in our office is also here if you have any questions. But I'm here just to give a summary of our evaluation. So just to get everybody on the same page, here's an aerial image of the project site. I hope everybody has a chance to see, showing the band shell location proposed on the southwest side of Legion Lake, right near the Richfield Ice Arena. 666th Street is just on the south side, which is a rather noisy traffic source in the area. And then you have residential homes to the southeast and west. Also just wanted to provide the band shell layout as it currently exists with the band shell directed toward the south-southeast. So just want to be clear on what our scope was for this project. We've been asked to measure the ambient noise levels of the site just to have a baseline of what the existing conditions are in the neighborhood. Then after that, to perform a music simulation based on measured simulation levels at a similar venue and then to evaluate whether those levels measured in the neighborhood exceed the noise criteria as laid out by the state of Minnesota and then adopted by the city of Richfield and the code. And then beyond that, to develop a reasonable sound criterion to set for sound music performances at the site in the future. Let's just start it with the noise level criteria. Minnesota Rule 7030, as adopted by the city of Richfield, has code requirements for noise levels at receiver properties. They're evaluated by the time of day, whether it's daytime or nighttime, by whether it's a residential or commercial or even an industrial receiver. And then what the sound is, if it's an L10 sound level, which is the 10th percentile or the loudest noises going on at the space, you could think of it as, or the L50 sound level with, which is a 50th percentile or a median, almost average sound level. So for this project, we understand all performances will be done by 10:00 PM, so it's a daytime event. And at the residential receivers that are nearest to us, our guidelines for this would be an L10 of 65 dB and a 60 dB L50 level. On the right there, I just included, just for reference, what a 60 dB level is in comparison to some other levels. You can see that it's basically comparable to an urban area daytime sound level. So we got started by measuring the sound levels at a similar performance. Fortunately for us, the music season hadn't ended by the time we were awarded this project, so we were able to go to the Minnehaha Pavilion in Minneapolis and measure a similar performance. We understand that the common music genre to be performed at the Richfield Band Shell would be Americana. And so we were fortunate that an Americana-style band was performing on September 1st, so I was able to set up 50 feet in front of the band shell and measure sound levels there. The reason it shows 50 feet is there's actually a sound crew at the site and that's where they say they typically set up is 50 feet in front to evaluate what the levels are and how everything's sound. So for a future performance at Richfield, it'd probably be a very similar setup. So then we, on the September 9th, we performed ambient noise measurements in the community around the band shell proposed site. So this marks all 13 positions that measurements were made at. And the positions were based, we, we chose these positions based on the effect that the band shell could have. The band shell will be facing in this direction, so they'd be most likely to hear sound from the band shell. And so we wanted to evaluate noise at these locations. The distances from the band shell are also listed on the plot. And what we found is that the L50, the median sound level along 66th Street was 62 to 65 dB. So this level by, just the ambient noise is already above the 60 dB criteria that the MPCA has set. Once we got off of 66th Street, even a half block back, the decibel level dropped to 47 to 55 dB, so less than the 60 dB criteria. So then on the 19th, we did our music simulation study. In this picture, you can see the speakers that we had set up at the proposed site with the sound system. And we repeated two Americana-style songs repeatedly while we made measurements at all of the same locations that the ambient measurements were made at. You can see on the right side are. You can see on the right side, our sound level meter, one of our sound level meters that was set up 50 feet in front of the speakers as the control point. And we used that location also to set our levels. So the L50 level at Minnehaha Pavilion from our entire measurement period was 77 dB. And for this simulation, we wanted to make it a worst case. So we actually set ours at 82 dB, 5 dB louder, intentionally so that we were trying to make a worst-case scenario for measuring out in the community. So again, here's the plot of those measurement locations. And our test results found that along 66th Street, of course, it's still above 60 dB at these locations. When we got back into, well, basically because the ambient noise from the traffic is just keeping it above 60 dB to begin with. Then when we went back into the community further, the noise levels from the music simulation were less than the 60 dB criteria, ranging anywhere from 51 to 56 dB. The music was audible at these locations, but it was very much intermixed with the ambient. I had a hard time telling whether the ambient was the primary noise traffic or if the music was. A lot of it really seemed like it was ambient personally. So this is just a plot of all the levels comparing the ambient to the music simulation test results at each location. Of course, at location one, right in front of the band shell simulation spotted, the music simulation was loud. But here you can see especially at locations two, seven, and 10, that the ambient and traffic noise always exceeded 60 dB. And everywhere else, it was less. So from this, we wanted to be thorough. As engineers, we don't like having some results. We want to be able to figure out the real problem. So we wanted to be able to evaluate, does the music exceed the criterion even though the ambient is already above the criteria? So what we decided to do was to do some calculations. We took the music simulation levels at 50 feet and we calculated what the sound level should be if it were at the distances that we plotted. You know, the closest distance was 490 feet to the nearest residence, and then the furthest distance was over 1,000 feet. And we kept out all excess attenuation, which would be air absorption, ground absorption, barriers from houses in the way, that wasn't included. Any wind or temperature gradients were not included. There's a possibility that wind could actually increase to some extent because of, if you assume a downward, downwind propagation of the sound that you could have where wind is actually bending more of the sound down to the receiver locations. But typically, it's very, it's almost always that the other things that I've mentioned as excess attenuation are more sound attenuating than what the wind does. So it's almost always a reduction in sound that you get from excess attenuation. So we made these worst-case assumptions. And what we found is that at locations two and location seven, which are the closest to the band shell, there's a possibility that in the worst-case scenario, based on our music simulation levels, that you could exceed the 60 dB L50 criteria level. But at every other location, it was, it was still always less than the 60 dB criteria. So coming to how would we set then a music performance criterion? This is an image back at Minnehaha Pavilion again, just showing where the sound crew was set up 50 feet in front of the pavilion. So if we have a similar scenario at the Richfield Band Shell and we're 50 feet out, what would they want to set levels to, to make it that you weren't gonna exceed 60 dB? And what we're, what we have as a preliminary recommendation is to set the L50 level at 50 feet to less than or equal to 79 dB. So that's three decibels less than our simulation levels, which gets the worst-case levels that we calculated, 60 dB or less at the nearest receivers. It's also 2 dB louder than what we measured at Minnehaha Pavilion. So it seems reasonable that you could have performances that meet this criterion. So that's our summary at this point. Does anybody have any questions they'd like to ask?
Just, uh, it is interesting, and I'm, I'm not a sound technician or an engineer or anything. But it, at least some of the reports I got from some of the people that were, that live in the neighborhood during your testing procedures, that Robert Plant, they, they can get used to Adele, they can't. He said Adele, Adele came through as clear as a bell.
Yeah, and so you look at the levels and the different songs and there is a difference.
Is, is it a tone in the singer's voice? The tone, the singer's voice will carry or project a little bit differently too, won't it?
Yeah, so in any piece of music, there's variability in the spectrum, what frequency the sound is at, whether it's a low frequency, mid-frequency, or high frequency. And song to song, there's a difference in the amplitude. Some songs will be quieter than other songs.
Yeah.
Um, in the case that we did, the Roger Plant song was quieter than the Adele song. So they probably heard Adele even more just because of the amplitude difference. Not to mention that she also has some very powerful vocals. And has some louder peaks, so yeah.
Okay, yeah, I was just curious because that's what, and they, they said it wasn't offensive or in any respect, but it was just so much clearer.
Yeah, and that's something we noted in our report too, is it's a nice thing about having Americana-style music is it's not offensive and as loud and as heavy in the bass as what some other music is. It's a more family-friendly, you could say, music.
Okay, thank you.
So we have to think twice before booking Adele, is what we're saying.
You want to see their, you want to see their playlist, maybe?
Yeah, right.
Yeah, yeah. Councilmember?
My question was, uh, and it was asked me by some citizens that saw this. Why, why didn't we evaluate like Park Avenue or further to the west? And it was, is it because of the way the sound will project from the soundstage or?
It is, yeah. So we were limited in time. We were trying to fit all of our measurements that we made into a certain block. And so making five-minute-long measurements and moving around and trying to get each set of measurements done in one night, we were limited to how many measurements we could perform. And then what we really focused on was who was gonna be most affected by the directivity of the band shell.
Okay, so that map, let's say if you measured Columbus, would you have an opinion of whether the noise at 66 and Park would be less than Columbus or?
I don't know the streets as well as others.
What, it'd be one block? You, you measured Columbus, so this'd be one block west.
One block west. Okay, so the levels would be slightly less then, but the distant, oh.
The distance-
So down Columbus, you can actually have some line of sight to where the sound measure, or to where the sound simulation setup was. So the one block to the west is gonna have that cut off by houses for the most part. So you're gonna have some added barrier effect and you're gonna be increasing distance. So the levels should be even quieter there than they would be on Columbus.
Okay.
Other questions?
This is partly just a comment. Councilmember Fitz Henry and I were there and just walking, I, as this was going on, I was kind of walking around to some of the various locations. And it's interesting the, the results about the ambient noise on 66th and how it sort of lined up exactly with the sound of the concert. Makes sense to me just because when you stand on 66th, that's almost an area where you can barely hear the performance. You can, the ambient noise is actually louder than the concert itself. And you actually have to go further away in some ways to actually have some, being able to hear the, the concert. But it, and it, the, the level seemed to indicate, my experience as well, that sure, at some of these sites, you could hear the concert was going on. But it, it was more kind of that, you know, that's off in the background while you're doing work around the house. And I can't imagine you could hear it if you were inside your house, as an example. But it was just, it was interesting to hear that, hear the sound coming from 66th and then just off of it.
Yeah, so I, because I thought something like this might come up, I included a measurement sheet from that location on location to the closest measurement to the site, which is on 66th Street. And here you can see, you know, if we said that the sound level of the music is around 60 dB, you see most of the traffic noise is usually above it. So that's what you're experiencing is you're usually just hearing traffic and you might hear some of the frequency content of some of the music. Or when a car is not, you know, within 100 feet of either side of you, you may be able to more clearly understand what the music is, but it's gonna be very difficult most of the time.
And to add to his comment, when I live on Park, about close to 68th. And the further I got away from 66th Street, I started picking up the music again. Because the ambient noise levels, but I, I could definitely tell Adele. I mean, you could hear that in the, the Robert Plant wasn't as loud. And you could, you could determine it was music. You couldn't understand it, but when Adele got on, you definitely knew it was her, so.
Well, that was part of the worst-case assumptions, is trying to pick out music that was a little bit different in each piece and trying to make it, you know, that it was gonna be experiencing both sides.
And then my only other comment is just thank you for, for doing the study. I think it's gonna be very helpful. And I wanted to thank the Planning Commission for recommending it because I think it gives the city some data and some ability to better manage sound when we have the band shell up and running. I think it's really gonna be helpful.
We can use this and other things to set criteria and make sure that people are compliant or they no longer get to come to Richfield, right?
As you can imagine, we're happy to help.
Well, other cities have compliance similar, don't they? That with restricting DBs and what they play. So I think that's something that we, now we have some data to be able to figure out where we want to put that. Other questions or concerns? Staff? Anything?
Just a one comment.
Please.
Maybe to our, to our director. Are we gonna be able to assure that we can monitor that 77 decibels adequately so that we don't exceed that? And then the second part of the question is in our ordinance, we can't transition property lines, so after 10 o'clock. So 10 o'clock, everything's done.
Two great questions. Thank you, Councilmember Fitz Henry. So we're gonna get some guidance from the city, from the Minneapolis Park Board on how to manage sound. The coordinator of the Lake Harriet Band Shell has offered to do that with us. And they've done a very good job. They, they have a technician there that actually measures the sound during every performance. And they know kind of the sweet spot of where to set that sound so that they don't get complaints. And, and, um, what they, what they do, they've, they've said that they, they make it a very clear understanding with the performers that we have criterion established for how loud they can play. And we got that criterion very clear to us today and we'll try with that. But we'll see, you know, if we're getting some complaints, we'll have to lower that criterion perhaps. And we'll, we'll take it serious and I, I think we will be able to manage that sound. It's not the, been told to me, it's not the band shell that makes the sound, it's the performers. And I think we do have the ability to manage, manage that. So, um, and then the second question was in regards to the curfew. And yes, there'll only be one event that would come to you for approval to, to go beyond the 10 o'clock. And that would be with our community event license, the 4th of July. But we have no plans to rent or to program that facility beyond that curfew time.
Just one other follow-up. You mentioned if you get complaints. So if somebody calls, will somebody be on-site to take them complaints so we can adjust that sound rapidly or?
We will never schedule any concerts there or permit any rentals, that sort of thing, without a staff person being there. And that person will be on-site during the whole time. That person will, you know, will be operating the sound equipment sometimes and, and, or be managing the sound like we, like we've talked about tonight.
Okay, this actually was just a discussion, so there actually is no recommended action rather than just discussion with the council. At this time, we'll move on then to the next agenda item. Councilmember Garcia? Thank you very much for coming and presenting tonight.
Thank you, Mayor. This is kind of a straightforward, excuse me, straightforward, um, report here. This is consideration of an agreement with EDS Builders to perform construction management services for a community band shell. On July the 12th, 2016, the council approved a resolution that granted approval of the site plan to allow a band shell at Veterans Memorial Park. The new selection offered better soils and a chance to lower costs for the project. The revised cost estimates have been completed and additional funds have been secured by the Friends of the Band Shell to build a band shell with available funds. The project is now ready to begin preparing for a second bid. One of the cost-saving measures proposed is to utilize a construction manager to help the city manage a small number of construction contracts instead of a general actor, contractor. Staff recommends EDS Builders to act as the construction manager and to assist with the preparation of the plans and specifications, specifications of the preparation of multiple bid contracts. If bids fall within available funding and the council approves the project, the construction manager will also supervise construction and assist the city with the overall project. This is a similar arrangement used in constructing of the municipal center here. And then the other paragraph talks about EDS and, and, um, you know, and, and the construction management services they have provided throughout the cities. And they're very, you know, very impressive array of a resume, kind of. The, so the Friends of the Band Shell continued to solicit funds for the project and now has secured 130,000 additional project funds. These funds, along with the funds previously appropriated by the city and donations previously received through the initial fundraising drive, now total $522,000. A complete construction estimate is attached. And Mr. Topson-Hoffer? If you wanna make some comments?
Sure, thank you, Councilmember Garcia and Councilmembers. So I'm gonna talk a little about, summarize this information again. We're ready to, to bid this out and to redesign this. We've raised the money. And again, partly it's because we chose a new site. And you know, we've done that. This is the site, it's closer to the arena. And we took a chance at better soils and we found it. The soils aren't like great, but they're such where it's less money to do this foundation than we originally thought when we bid this thing out initially a year ago. Specifically, this sound has other, or this site has other benefits. It's closer to the arena, it's closer to parking, closer to restrooms. And it's the same exact spot really as the stage location for our Richfield 4th of July celebration. So we know that works well, so, um, much better site. So let's talk about where the funding comes from and be clear about that. Comes from several places. First, the city has approved city money in the amount of $325,000 already through CIP and through another appropriation of $75,000. And so we have $325,000 that comes from the city. We, our initial band shell task force did fundraising over a year ago. And to date, we have in city funds, in, in our city funds, $67,000 that we've collected to date there. That contributes to the sources of this project. Then lastly, as mentioned, a, a new private group has been created. And they've done a good job and a lot of hard work and they're continuing to do fundraising and will continue even after this band shell is built. But they're ready to pledge $130,000. And I have the president of the Friends of the Band Shell here tonight to attest to that if need be. But the complete total of all these sources is $522,000. So then let's look at how we'll spend it. Well, we've spent some money already on this project. We've had a design, initial design and bidding of this. We've also had a number of soil testings to, to look at soils, some, a survey of the site, that sort of thing. So there's been expenses on this already totaling about $75,000. So the construction estimate that was attached to your packet is for $387,000. And this construction estimate was prepared by Doc Smith. He's the, the EDS Builders President that, uh, has worked for, for other cities doing the same thing. He did a separate cost estimate of this using his sources. And then it's mainly the, the soils that are saving the day here. And so instead of using micro piles to get through some very poor soils and some construction debris, we have to remove about 10 feet of, of soils from the foundation of the band shell and then put compactable granular gravel in its place. And then that will be a slab-on-grade, uh, uh, type of foundation. And then that will be a slab-on-grade type of foundation and much less expensive and makes me happy because it's a lot less maintenance to have a concrete stage. So I'm pleased with that and it's less expensive. The remaining costs of this project would be the construction manager fee, that's the contract that you're looking at tonight. There's some additional architectural fees because it's a new site, so it's a slightly different design, a different foundation. And then the sound test, which you heard the results of tonight, is an additional $10,000, and that equals 522,000. Not a lot of wiggle room, there's some contingency in there, but we still feel that with favorable bidding, we should be able to do it for this amount. So a little more about EDS builders. They've done, recently, they've done the re-renovation, or actually, they rebuilt the Springbrook Nature Center in Fridley. And I talked to the Parks and Recreation Director there and the new Springbrook Nature Center. They really liked working with EDS builders, particularly because he found ways to save money and to keep the project on budget. And before it even went out to bid, he was able to, you know, find ways to maybe look at a different material, that sort of thing, to really try to make the project happen in budget. And that, that would be part of his scope, is between now and the time we would bid this, he would be working with our architect to make sure that plans and specs were, were going to save as much money as we could upfront without sacrificing the quality of what we want to build. And by the way, this is the same design as we originally had, it's just the foundation's different. He's had some other projects here that we've looked into, and the references that I got from, these are city employees, were very, spoke very highly of them. So then lastly, I'll talk about a timeline. So if you decide to go ahead with the contract tonight, we're going to start right, right away on plans and specifications and construction documents. And we have plenty of time, we have got till the end of the year to do that. We really believe that the favorable time to do bidding is in January. And that's when we put this out to bid, in January, and then we'd come back to the council shortly afterwards to award contracts to various bidders. It's not a general contractor now, that's what our construction manager does. It's maybe five or six smaller contracts that the construction manager manages. So the construction then would start in the spring, and our construction manager, EDS builders, would be the onsite supervisor of the construction throughout the summer till the end of the summer. And then we're looking at getting concerts and rentals programmed for the 2018 season. Mayor?
Go ahead.
Couple of questions, and it may be whoever's the president. Pledges are pledges, it's not money in the bank. What's the criteria? What's the payday on the pledges? When do we get that money?
Well, David Butler's here, he can actually talk a little about the money, but what, what our intention is, is when we go, after bidding, when we go to actually set the project and have the contracts approved, at the same time, we're going to have a fiscal agreement drawn up that's in writing about the 130,000 when it's received, that sort of thing. And it'll be a contract that we have with them in writing, that fiscal agreement will come before the council.
With the individual pledges, pledges? I mean, is there one pledge or a series, a bunch of pledges?
They are a 501(c)(3), so they'll be giving us one check for...
No, no, I'm talking about the people that have pledged the $130,000. Is there an individual contract with each of the individual people that are pledging money?
Can you answer that, Mr. Butler?
First of all, I'm sorry, I'm hearing about nine tenths of what's being said tonight. One hearing aid is one shot, so I'm not able to hear. So would you please repeat that, Pat, as to what your question was?
Jim told us that you secured $130,000 in pledges. And my only question was, what's the criteria for the nonprofit coming into possession of that money to pay for the, pay for the, their part of the construction?
What's the criteria?
Yeah, when do they give you the money?
Whenever you need it.
Well, I mean, you've got to give them some timeline, or don't you need it when you enter the contract to build the bandshell?
Well, you tell us what you want, Pat, and we'll perform.
Well, I want to probably see the money in the bank before we start anything. Because if we have a shortfall, if we get started and we've got 325, I just want to make sure that you got a plan B. If one or more of your pledges drop out or there's a change order...
How would you like a letter of credit from a bank?
Letter, well, it depends on what the criteria is for drawing down on.
Can you and I sit down and work that out?
Well, not, not me. I mean, I think you can work it out with the city attorney or the city manager.
It's a fair question, Pat, and I understand what you're saying, and we want to cooperate.
Understood. And so I don't think you want to work with me, I think you need to work with the city to make sure...
Whoever you want us to work with, we'll be glad to do that. I understand, if I were in your chair, I'd ask the same question.
All right, I don't know if it's, if it's Mary or Steve or, but, you know.
Okay. All right. That's a fair question.
I can tell you that we have cash in the bank plus pledges, and we're going to have the 130,000.
I don't deny that, I'm just saying that...
If you want more than that, we'll get whatever you want.
What I would like to see, Jim told us that there's not a whole lot of wiggle room in construction projects, have change orders, things change midstream. And I just want to make sure that we're covered on a plan B if in fact we go over budget and where the extra money's going to come from, if it's necessary. I'm not saying it's going to be, but I'm just saying that I don't want to be in the position where we've got something that's three quarters done and you need more money so the city has to put it up.
I can't answer your question as to what happens if we could come out not having enough to meet the bids. That's a whole nother question. I'm saying we'll provide 130,000. If the bids come in 50,000 over what Jim has laid out, that's the city's problem. We're not going to come up with the other 50,000.
I didn't, I'm not talking about the bid on the contract. I'm talking about change orders, it's something, or something that starts midstream that adds to the final cost. How are we going to, how are we going to accommodate that?
That's not my problem, I'm not going to deal with that. That's the city's problem.
Well, I don't think so, Dave.
Well, it's not my problem. I've offered to contribute 130,000, and that's all I'm going to agree to.
Okay. That's good to hear.
So, Councilmember Elliott, I'm going to go back to the fiscal agreement that I talked about when, before you agreed to this, to actually go with this, we're going to have a fiscal agreement directly with the Friends of the Bandshell to collect the 130,000. And like I said, they're continuing to do fundraising, but I think it's our job to try to make sure that we don't go, well, we don't have any more than 522,000. So that's what we're going to come to you in January with that amount. If, it could be that this might happen like, like our liquor store parking lot, and if it's way above that, it's our choice whether to accept that or not, you know. So I think that's how we would deal with, I mean, make sure we have a good enough contingency. And that's the beauty of going with a construction manager, because we can look at trying to make sure we're not going to go over that budget. And, and that's our intention.
Well, intentions are fine, and I endorse that. I'm just looking for the circumstance where it's not met. And then, then who's on the hook? The city? Dave told us the city, he's done it 130. And that's, that's my question. I'm not going to say it's happening, I certainly want this to get done. But also, I've been committed for the last two years to the 250, original and 75. I'm not committed to one penny more than that. And I'm not getting any assurances, if it goes over, for whatever reason, that it's not going to come back to the city.
This doesn't seem that confusing to me. If we have the money, we'll build the bandshell. If we don't, we won't. I mean, I think that's what we're saying here. Is that my, is that my, am I understanding correctly?
That's, that's what I'm trying to say, that, you know, in other words, I'm not going to feel comfortable having a bid come through if it's not possible to have that stay within budget. I'm just not going to feel comfortable about that.
Right. And we've passed an amendment capping what the city is going to spend. So that means we certainly will have to have a plan for the contingency that is reasonable. If we don't think it's reasonable, we can't proceed, you know.
Can we hear from, from Susan, who's a member of this committee?
The committee met again on Saturday, and they are committed to continuing to fundraise. Part of what's kind of held us back is that people want to know, well, is it really going to be built? And we're saying, yes, it is. We need your assistance and we need your support. We have lots of great ideas of the things that we are going to do to continue raising funds in order to make this happen, and hopefully to have some extra money, not just to cover contingencies, but also to cover the things that really need to be done and aren't in this particular proposal, which is lights and the sound system. We have some people that are willing to donate sound systems. And we are continuing to get things that we can from various folks that are willing to contribute in kind. So we are not done fundraising. And what we really need is the go-ahead from the council saying, yes, if we can come in under budget, we can do this. And so then we can tell people, yes, now we know where it's going to be, now we need to be able to proceed so that people really know what's happening. And we have done a number of interesting things, we are in the process, and we were at the Penfest selling the paver bricks, which are, people can have a donated paver brick. And we will be back here, hopefully in November, to tell you more about that and to encourage people to go forth with it. But there are a number of really good plans, the committee is a really excited and dedicated plan to make this happen. So I think you can assume that we will be continuing to raise funds, not only to cover the basic amount, which we have covered, but also to cover contingencies and future amenities. Because this, you don't want to stop here. We have people that are willing to donate money for a garden in the name of one of our local family members who is deceased. So this is going to be a really nice event and feature once it's done. So we are not backing away from it, we are continuing and pushing to do it.
Other thoughts?
Thank you.
Okay. Councilmember?
I guess I'd like to ask our legal representative. I, along with Pat Elliott, don't want to be on the hook for something. You know, we're kicking this can down the road, and at what point have we spent too much money and we're not assured that they're going to meet their commitments? So looking for, I guess, a little advice on whether we think that 130,000 is going to be solid and what we should think about that. If, you know, should it be in the bank now or where should it be?
Mayor and Councilmember Fitz Henry, certainly I will work with Mr. Butler and Mr. Topson-Hoffer to make sure that we have an agreement in place. And I would want to make sure that those funds were available and in the hands of the city before we proceed. And I will work with the staff to, you know, ensure that that, that that happens. I think that's, I think that kind of goes without saying, that we want to make sure that we, we work with the committee to, to reach an agreement on that.
Okay.
Right.
All right. Other comments or conversation? Do you want to make a motion?
Yes, my motion is to approve the agreement with EDS builders to perform construction management services for a community bandshell in the amount not to exceed 30,000.
I'll second.
And I'll just make a comment. I'm not against the builder and all that, but as part of the knock oversight committee and this being a non-compatible use, I will not be voting yes for this.
Understand. All those in favor signify by aye.
Aye.
Aye opposed?
Aye.
It passes. We have the, the next item is the appointment of the Youth Advisory Commission member. This goes to Michael Howard.
Yeah, consideration of the appointment of a Youth Advisory Commission member. Youth Advisory Commission members serve one-year terms coinciding with the school year. Although youth can apply to commissions during the two semi-annual recruitments, the city initiated a separate youth-only recruitment, which ended on October 1st, in order to try to fill two youth member openings. The Human Rights Commission and Transportation Commission each have one youth opening. Terms for the school year ending April 31st, 2017. Terms are for the school year ending at that time. Per the resolution approved by the city council on September 13th, 2016, non-resident youth may be considered for appointment to city commissions, as long as they are actively enrolled in a Richfield High School or equivalent located in the city of Richfield. One applicant was received, and a special city council meeting was scheduled and held today before our council meeting, and we conducted the interview. And so, we interviewed a young woman, Yamilas Ordones, and I think she's going to be great on the Human Rights Commission. So my motion is to approve the appointment of Yamilas Ordones, of the Youth Advisory Commission member, to the Human Rights Commission for a term expiring on August 31st, 2017.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor signify by aye.
Aye.
Aye opposed? Motion carries. City managers report.
Madam Mayor, members of the city council, I really don't have a report this evening.
Okay, claims and payroll.
So moved?
Second.
All those in favor signify by aye.
Aye.
Aye opposed? Seeing no further action, I'll call this meeting adjourned. Thanks, everyone.
Thank you.